All right, it's six o'clock. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Town Council meeting, Wednesday, April seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. If we could all stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice that somewhere in America that still happens.
Yay, America!
So, on the agenda, you have a roll call?
Debbie Kopp here.
Marty Wilson here.
Paul Edwards in here.
Jenny Bass, President.
And Mike McLaughlin called me a few minutes ago and he was like, "Son, Robert, heading this way, the mad dash. Most likely you'll be at least a half an hour late." So, he may decide to call in on my cell. I'll add him to the meeting if that happens. So, anyway, we'll choose him for right now. I want to start off with Mayor's Town Update. It's not a very long one, but it's kind of fun. I had a really fantastic mayor week since we last had a meeting. As soon as you see those speed limit signs go up at fifty-five miles an hour, I was excited.
Yay!
And I noticed that there's, you know, my wife mentioned there's someone that flew by at eighty miles an hour passing on W L, right through the fifty-five mile an hour zone. So, there's going to be a few of those out there that don't like them. But for the most part, I see people slowing down a little bit. And you'll notice that they have credit signs right now. I did talk to UDOT a few days ago. They do have the radar signs that are permanently mounted with the flashing stuff. They'll be mounted on those as soon as they come in. So, that is part of the overall plan on that. But that was an awesome experience to see that go up. And also, on Canyon Mountain Park, two weeks ago, we talked about Canyon Mountain Park and doing a park that might be benefit to those who live out in Cedar Point and Bolling Wells area. And we didn't hear a peep for two weeks after that. And five-thirty in the morning, yes, that happened. Five-thirty in the morning, I'm posting a video on Facebook, and by quarter to six in the morning, I'm getting messaging back and forth. And pretty much, it blew up the, my feed on people that were, didn't like the idea. And I thought, "This is fantastic." I just, I love, I'm going to post more videos on Facebook to get opinions. Everybody chimed in. They gave me great ideas. There's reasons I didn't like it, probably they had with it. So, you know, we won't do Canyon Mountain Park, obviously, because nobody, those people are, they just don't want it. So, it also changed a little bit about how I see the parks. A couple of things are going on. My wife and staff also came home tonight, mentioned there's a, you know, a guy that's almost hanging out at the park over there that's probably traveling and, you know, "Oh, this is a nice soft place to land and hang out," that kind of a thing. And so, I can see having a park ending by the highway, I can see how that could go downhill quick. And like even Jepson Canyon, I pressured Jepson Canyon people into putting the park on their design. And now I'm thinking that maybe we just have them do some upgrades here and we get rid of the park over there because it can be seen from the highway and it could be the same type of thing. And so, you know, those kind of things, the comments from people, I just appreciate it. And I just love it. This happened on the Main Street survey. Put it out there. And I called as many people as I could about the Jepson, or about the Main Street project. And they were mostly the people I was anxious to talk to, those that strongly disagreed with me because they gave an insight into how they were thinking and how maybe I should look at this. And so, all of that, I just find this a fantastic mayor day when we get to talk to people like that, find out what they're upset about and why. And so, it kind of redirects my thinking on, "Okay, maybe that wasn't such a great idea." And the moment I had it, I thought, "This is awesome. People are going to love it." And when they all shot it down, it's like, "Okay, refocus." I mean, I would love that park next to me, but not everybody's like me. So, anyway, I was very appreciative. In the morning, this couple of people were apologizing. I hope you're not mad at me, that kind of thing. I was like, "You guys are the citizens of the day for standing up to me and saying what you think." And I appreciate that a lot. And so, anyway, I'm listening to the people and we're not going to do a park over there. And we'll save our money and we'll, what we're going to do is focus on this other park. And we'll get into that in a couple of minutes. So, let me see if I've got anything else on my notes here. Anyway, so I think that's, I'll leave it at that for Mayor's Town Update. We'll go into our agenda. Item number one is dump truck purchase. We talked about this a little bit last week. We had a road committee meeting and talked about it as well, discussing what the needs of the road department would be to help us improve the roadways. And my staff even came up with the idea of, "What about a trailer? Can we get a trailer that move a pool and do the same kind of a job or a truck trailer kind of combos that might be a built purpose?" And so, those are things that we've been having conversations about. And the dump truck purchase is something I've already asked Zions Bank about for financing. And we're talking about a truck that's probably, the amount of money I asked for was around fifty thousand dollars for, from Zions Bank. That buys you a used dump truck. A hundred thousand buys you a new dump truck. So, we're talking about something that's probably going to be ten years old that has, hopefully finds something that's less than a hundred thousand miles on it. But these are, you know, Cummins diesel engines that give you a lot of life. And trying to keep us, not buy a piece of junk, but at the same time, buy something that's got some life left in it is part of the goal. A payment on something like that would come in somewhere around probably a thousand dollars or thereabouts. And we would just earmark that money to come out of B C Road Funds. They have, B C Road Funds allows us to do that. And that's how we would pay for the truck. The purpose of use of the truck would be to haul cinders. There can be some time, for example, if you might, we want to decide to patch a road, we could send it down the hill, have them put some asphalt in it, and we shovel the asphalt out to do some patching. We just don't have anything to haul like that stuff right now. I'm not willing to volunteer my new truck to do that. So, anyway, so that's kind of what we're thinking on that dump truck. Anybody have any questions about it?
Oh, both of these non-CDL. I know that one says description.
Yeah, I was looking for something that's twenty-six thousand pounds or less, and that's non-CDL. And this is, I'm looking only at a diesel and only at an automatic. Because that pretty much means that we can just about throw anybody in it that has the ability to just drive. They can be as a volunteer. We can be hauling cinders on a regular basis to different projects. The road department, what we've kind of discussed was to focus in on what's the hotspot?
With that.
Richard Fisher.
Yes. With that, patching the roads and things is a really good point because I think the way you let Dale do his digging and his repairs and what he needs to do, and then I think we need to go pass the road back with real asphalt, not this cold path that just deteriorates. So, we can do that. We can fix the potholes as they arise.
Well, the water department have access to this. And so, then they'd be able to get that, you know, asphalt in the truck. And, you know, it's just a way to help deliver it. I just think it'll help us when we have, you know, some potholes on Mount Zion Drive. You know, we'd have some to hauls on that stuff.
You drew it down, aren't you?
Cabin cleaning out barge ditches. When the cabin goes around and cleans out some barge ditches, I mean, I've seen him bucket with that backhoe.
It is crazy.
Love scoop after scoop and take it, you know, a day and a half to do something.
Right. Takes them ten minutes. You have one in the town, back over the town. So, you dump the buckets, you go back to get another one. It's crazy the way we're doing the business right now.
Right.
And a thousand dollars a month, I think it'll save us more than that. We have, you know, people that have heavy equipment, but when you run a semi with, you know, a belly dump or something, you're talking a hundred and twenty bucks an hour that you owe that guy. And so, you go for a thousand bucks that day real quick. And we're, we can spend as much time as we want hauling the dump truck. And when we can get there, it'll be a little slow, but at least not have, you know, the expense of hiring a belly dump.
Janet Prince, seventeen sixty-seven, Mount Zion Drive. Our passage chip seal on Mount Zion Drive has not been graded in three and a half years. And after all this rain, it is terrible.
Yeah.
And we've got...
It's on, it's on my radar. And as soon as the grade is fixed, it'll be over there. We're trying to hit, you know, goosebumps and bass. And so, I'm hoping within a week we'll have that graded out together.
Well, thank you.
And then, I was actually, I was actually going to haul a bunch of road base over there as well, pick that circle where your house is. And, but we need to haul some road base there and to, because, and they own Gooseberry as well. They need some road base on their road as well. So...
Thank you.
Marty, were these just examples? These were two of the targets to give you an idea of what we're looking at. And these are around forty thousand dollars. So, the loan we asked for is fifty because it's always a moving target because by the time I call on these tomorrow, they could be sold already. And so, you know, and then there's a new batch online where you can go and try and find something else. But this is a good example of typical of what's on there that we can find and, you know, so you have an idea of what we're trying to buy. Something that's not trash, something that's not rusted to pieces. I can go all over the U.S. to buy these things, but once you get back to the Midwest, you're talking about ice and snow and rust.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so, I'm looking California and, you know, Florida and Phoenix and, you know, places like that where we, at least we're not buying a rust bucket. So, anyways.
Florida.
Anyway, I don't think there's anything to vote on today. I put this on discussion and action, but I think today's probably not the time to do that. We're going to probably further look into also the dump. If we do a dump, it's, they can pretty much haul just as much as one of these trucks, but you have to have a one-ton truck to pull it. And in my experience so far, when I was doing some research, I've only had a day or two to do this research on the one-ton. I think Richard was even suggesting a four-fifty would be a more appropriate size truck to, because you can't have two lines of a truck hauling, you know, twenty thousand pounds.
Right.
And you've got to have something that's got a little weight to it. Heavier brakes, heavier tires, heavier everything. And so, if we went that way, you know, the dump trailer, they start on a small one, about eleven thousand dollars. The ones we probably need is closer to probably fifteen thousand. And at that point, if you go buy a four-fifty truck, you're spending the same kind of money as you would for this medium-duty dump that has a twenty-six thousand pound capacity. So, you can buy a four-fifty probably only be, what, ten, eleven thousand pounds? G B W?
No, they're a ton and a half. So, they're actually, I think, twenty-two something. They're, they're pretty heavy duty.
Well, that's what it'll haul, but the G B W on it's not going to be, I don't think it's any more than fourteen thousand pounds.
No, no, they're not qualified.
Yeah. And so, your, your capacity on the truck, we're comparing a twenty-six thousand pound capacity truck to fourteen thousand pounds probably capacity truck. So, half is heavy and it's the same price. I'm just thinking the dump truck's the way to go, but I...
The town needs a dump truck.
Do you guys have any questions about this?
The town needs a dump truck.
Especially a town with many priorities.
Just real quick, so you said the balance are multiple for six years is what you're asking me?
Five years.
Five years.
Three and a half percent interest rate is what Zions does on that. Even on used equipment, they'll go five years on it. And you're looking, I mean, I didn't work it out exactly on this exact truck, but I was playing with different ones. It's a front thousand, eleven hundred dollars. Ballpark would be our target payment range. It could be a little less than that. If we, if we decide on one of these at forty thousand, yeah, it could be eight, nine hundred dollars. But basically, we'll probably have that answer. Do we have that answer already that you?
Yep.
Okay. Anyway, next day or two, we'll probably have that answer. Do you guys want to vote on this? Or do you want to kick it down the can two more weeks? Or what do you guys think?
I'm ready to vote on it.
I'm good on it.
We need it.
All right. All right. Well, I make the motion that we consider the purchase of the dump truck and give us a budget range of about fifty thousand dollars.
I second that.
Finance through Zions.
Now, part of that, we're with the road funds too, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be the biggest, one of the biggest parts of it.
So, do you have any second to this?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries.
I'll go to Mike for an hour first.
Speak up, Mike. All right, so, let's move on to the next one, enzyme billing. You know, the last time we brought this on the calendar, we have invoicing on enzyme billing that we owe them around fifteen thousand dollars. There's some questions on the billing as far as what the total was. Ben's worked it out that he feels like what we owe them is fifteen thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. Some of these invoices that we're talking about are outstanding from our prior mayor's budget. It's, some of this is outstanding as far back as August of two thousand and seventeen. And now, I get to deal with it. And some of this was for zoning map that we don't have a contract on. We don't have any commitment to, other than we've asked them to make updates to the G I S map, which have been done. So, by extension, we've hired them because we've asked them to do all this work. Richard Fisher.
At one point in time, didn't they say we owe them like thirty-something thousand? So, we've got this down to about fifteen now?
No, it's, yeah, let me, let me go into that. There's, there's some additional items here, an additional seventeen, well, at least on the bottom, yeah, that's right. That's about seventeen thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars. It's outstanding as well. But these were, basically what they did is they came in and they did some workforce for some stormwater handling and C I B funding. So, we were, they're going to go for funding for some wash stabilization and flood control, things like that. And so, that money's recovered when they do the project. And because we haven't done the project, it's not recoverable money. But, yeah, there was about ten thousand dollars there. And then, there's some other services like where they reviewed a subdivision for somebody that is really the responsibility of the individual that had that review done and not per se the town. So, the only thing that the town really owes is that fifteen seven thirty-six. I'm not completely satisfied with the end product. I think it's somewhat incomplete, but I can't hardly blame them for not completing what we haven't even paid for over the last year and a half, two years as well. So, I feel like we have a responsibility to take care of the bills, even though they're not ours today, they're someone else's. But it's not fair to them to be sitting out forever. So, anyway, you may not have talked about it. You feel like this is probably the right thing to do to pay this?
Yeah. So, we, we have it in the budget for engineering services in this year. So, we can take care of it this year. And my suggestion is that we get a letter drafted up indicating that this fulfills all work done. And I'll have Sean review that. But basically, we have to check over after they agree that this, the levers evolve, everything due for those services.
Okay.
So, what we're agreeing on today is just the fifteen seven?
Yeah. Yes. I make the motion that, or move that we pay the enzyme bill as Ben's outlined at fifteen seven forty-six fifty, if they're willing to agree to settle in for that amount of money. I'll second that. Vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. We have a consent calendar for March two thousand and nineteen. Anybody have any questions on it? Do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
Yeah. So, this is the, as required by state law, we have to present a full financial report to the council on a quarterly basis. So, this contains a little bit more information, essentially the balance sheet that we normally don't do in a consent calendar. Because, because I ran the full financial report, it didn't have that, the handy percentages that we normally look at for each budget category. And I should have said that independently, but didn't. We did make some, we reallocated some budget categories, like just to get things in line. Not, we didn't increase any budgets, but we just shifted some around from within, like the administrative category. A couple of things for fire, you know, just so that we're, we're well within budget. We don't, none of this has to be public notice just because we're not...
So, what you're saying to us is that you had extra money in someplace that we didn't spend, which needed money in another category.
For example, we budgeted fifteen hundred dollars for fire department office supplies. Well, we took five hundred of that and just put it to fuel because they're going, doing a lot of training and cedar and brakes.
Right. Okay.
That was approval, that's department head approval required. So, chief approved that, as an example.
Yeah. Okay. Any else? Any problems or anything you want to talk about?
No, we're, I'm knee-deep, neck-deep in budgets right now. I'll have that out to the Town Council here in a couple of days. And I'm really excited about this next, next budget year. And I think we'll, I'll send you a little tutorial on the budget. And I think you'll all be able to navigate that and get a feel for where the priorities are. And this is, in the next Town Council meeting, we'll propose a tentative budget. So, essentially, you'll adopt a tentative budget. And then, in June, we'll have the public hearing to receive public feedback, public comment on, on the final budget. So, we're on track for creating budget for next year.
And Ben's check register is spot on compared to the, to the deposits that we did?
Perfect. That's great. Also, on that check register, I believe this is the first month where we have water remittances. Those were the top three items on the register. So, we're collecting water payments and then remitting those to the special service district. So, I don't think there was anything else on there that stood out to me as needing explanation.
Well, the other thing that we're doing just for, for public comment, can you explain the process on the reconciliations? In the past, I think we've been a little loose on this and we're tightening this up.
Bank reconciliation?
Bank reconciliation.
Yeah. So, it's the treasurer's responsibility, Debbie, Councilwoman Kopp is the treasurer for the town, her responsibility to ensure that the cash is handled appropriately and that the banks are reconciled. In the past, the, essentially, the accountant has, has been doing the majority of that, preparing a deposit, giving it to the treasurer. After speaking with our accounting firm, Hidden Burdick, they recommend that it's okay for the accountant to do the reconciliation in the software, but it's good to have the, it's necessary to have the treasurer review, open the original bank statement, and sign off on the reconciliation. So, she can go through and make sure there's nothing...
And we always have a third party involved. In the water district's case, it's Neil Duncan. In the town's case, it's Debbie Kopp, where they're going over the deposit that Ben prepares to double-check that all the money is accounted for. So, we just have a check and balance. More than one person looks at the money to make sure that everything's, as it should be.
So, when I come in to sign checks, I make a list myself. And then, when Ben gives me the register, I check to see that everything that's on my list is on the register and by some reason.
Yeah. You know, just out for information's sake, I've heard them talking about this. I'm just glad it's nice and plain and...
I'm getting, as a secondary note, I am getting the financials reconciled to, you know, for example, that our accounts receivable balance actually matches our outstanding receivables, that our payable matches. I'm not a hundred percent through that. So, anyone that really dug into this would notice that our accounts receivable bal, or accounts payable balance is not correct. So, this, this is, it's still in progress, but it's been wrong for years. So...
Well, it's like these enzyme things. They weren't even, half of the stuff wasn't even booked into our account saying that we owed it. And when we started digging into it, found out, "Oh, this is bills from two years ago or a year ago." And they weren't even entered into the, our system as we did over time.
Well, it's not there, does it exist?
Yeah. Yeah. Unfortunately, I went back in and I saw email after email where they'd been trying to collect it, you know, a year ago. And it wasn't even addressed. So, anyway, so that's why we're dealing with it. And anyway, anybody have any questions on consent calendar? Ben?
Nope.
I'm going to let somebody else do the motion.
I make the motion. We accept the consent calendar for March two thousand and nineteen, and the financial review is first quarter of the calendar year.
I'll second that.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Gooseberry Landscape Developer Agreement. I printed off Forrest's email, and I got here without it. Anybody have a topic on it? So, all right. So, we've been working on, Gooseberry Mesa agreement for about two years now. Unfortunately for them, it's taken that long. But Forrest has some issues. Do you want to take a couple of minutes for us and go over a couple of these? I just want to give you a chance to be heard.
I think if you play a new project, you should start over with a new application.
Okay. All right. You guys have any questions on it?
Is that the one we heard, you know, a month or so ago?
I had the wrong agreement in the file a month ago. We're supposed to have approved it.
The guys that came down from Bark City or something?
Yes. That's really up on top of you, Gooseberry Mesa. Our, our take on it, Forrest's brand new project, our take on it is the project is basically the, I'll do that back. Some of the improvements, some of the things they did were just improvements to the project. They started out shipping containers. Now, they're doing stick-filled units that have steel siding on them. It's relatively the same as what we already approved. They, instead of having a hundred and twenty of these spread out all over, they're potting them together so they have groups of three instead of, which I like better than having them scattered everywhere.
One building is three units, right?
Yeah. One building, three units. It's supposed to, individual units, because that's how they originally set it up, was individual shipping containers that they were going to decorate. And now, they've decided that they want to up their clientele and they want to charge two fifty, three hundred a night for these things. And so, to do that, they got to do something bigger than a shipping container to command that kind of price. And so, they went, they upscaled a little bit on the sizing and so forth so they could provide better amenities in sizing units. And they're stick-filled and they're, they're still doing the steel clad because they like the rusted metal look on it. It's part of the developer agreement. Some of the things we've been fighting over were like fire access road. Is it going to be a full fire-rated road? That's in the agreement now that they have to provide that. We have some issues with the water. One, there were things in reference to end this agreement. The road were water-related. We've separated those out. So, the water has their own agreement. And we have our own agreement. And I think we beat this thing up to death. But is anybody have any questions on any of this?
Has the water already been sized?
Not yet. It's still redlined. And we've, in theory, I talked to them just a few minutes ago, in fact, before the meeting. And they want to have a meeting again to go over a few things, but for the most part, there's no major issue. We're just arguing over some language and a few things. So, I've got to get with Sean and find out if he's available. And we're going to set up a meeting in the next couple of days and hammer that out over the phone. Anyway, I think that, you know, I think they've got everything in here. We've gone back and forth in this document so many times, we're, I'm tired of looking at it. You guys have any questions on it?
There. One more question. The parcel is a different, well, the group of parcels are different parcels than what was approved. That doesn't seem like many.
Is the area still, the area that they're proposing to develop now in the, in the proper zone? In other words, has the zone changed at all or would it change? It's already been PD. It's already PD. If it's already been zoned PD...
Part of it is.
Well, all right. But that's what I'm trying to clarify. Are you saying that the development that they have, they are proposing is, some of it is not in a PD zone?
About four acres of... About four acres of wood. I, I haven't seen what they're proposing, so, but it looks like about four.
We, we have and, yes, we thought two years ago and it's all included.
And the, the entire, um, area was zoned?
Yes, and it's upgraded a lot and will be a lot better.
Not, not the case at all, I guarantee.
Not the case that's upgraded? Well.
It's not the case that the seventy acres have been zoned, it's only sixty-six point four.
Well, they're, they're, uh.
Oh, they're only talking four acres, but it is four acres of.
But they're donating four acres to the town, is that the four acres we're talking about?
I have no idea.
Yeah, it's something, yeah.
Haven't seen what they're donating.
'Cause they're, they got four acres, they're not, um, they're just giving to us because they don't wanna have it, so. If their area where they are developing the, the project is properly zoned, then, uh, you have the discretion as town council to look at the proposal, to make any changes, the planning commission made a recommendation to you and now you can look at their proposal and decide if you like their, their proposal or not. You do not have to send it back to the planning commission if you make changes on, uh, on what's been proposed. Which acre is, um, prop, what, what's, do you know the, uh, location? Would you mind showing me on a map where the four acres is that is not included? I've got a map up here if you could point out to me, I'm curious.
That map doesn't show the, uh.
That's your best recommendation though, where's the?
The, this parcel here, the AV thirteen eleven seven eight is the one that was zoned.
So it's right here?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, it, it's this, this parcel.
Yeah?
They, they've added a couple of parcels down here.
Okay, so if the.
At least that's the way I read the development, really.
Okay.
That's fire access.
So that's the access and it's the part they're donating, and I think it's right here where they're donating.
I have no idea what they're donating.
That's, it's right here, it's right here, so that's probably the one, that's what they're giving to the town. 'Cause this is, most of this is from the cliff side behind the people that live along there, um, you know, there's some flat stuff, I mean, in theory, we could put a park there, but I don't think anybody's wanting, gonna wanna have a park in their backyard, but basically that's, uh, they're donating to the town, that's probably what it is out.
Okay.
Anyway, do they have any issues or? You have a sharp eye, so.
It's quite different than one.
Mayor, what I, what I would say is this is, if this is used as an access road, with, whatever I've heard it referred to as a fire, I don't know if it's just a fire, it's an access road, if it's the main access, as long as that does not violate the zone that it is in right now, you, you are fine.
It's, it's on RE, I believe.
So, so you can put a, a road is valid and permitted use and RE.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay, sure. Well, they're not putting cabins down there, that's for sure.
Are they, are they putting?
But I, I just, I, I thought it was important we have some discussion about, we need to do.
Well, if they were putting structures in that area, um, then that would be different. But if they're using it in, um, in a manner that's consistent with your zoning and allowed and a roadway would be allowed in a.
I, I don't think they're putting structures in it until they change again and then I don't know.
I think at that time though, we would evaluate it and then if, if they actually were, we'd have to make sure they were in the proper zone or rezone it.
Structures there.
All right.
So could we approve it based on what we think they're doing with it and if they're doing something different, then they would have to relook at it?
Well, if, if they wanna put any kind of structure on that one piece of ground, um, 'cause the, the property showing me is what they're donating to the town. And the other piece is their access road that goes up there for fire and everything where the project is, is, um, the PD zone, so.
Well, they're farther than seventy-five feet back from the rim.
Yes.
So this part of the land is being donated, so it doesn't disturb the residents down below.
No, it's, um.
And the other is their, their road that only the fire could use. They have to inch it south of Gooseberry.
We've had a few discussions with them on it and I don't know the answer.
We've been doing this for two years, yeah, and.
Yeah, right. There's a piece of ground, if you go along Gooseberry on, heading out that direction towards the green gate, on those houses on the left hand side, just before you get to the green gate, there's a piece of ground that goes up behind those homes and up the cliff. That's the part that they're talking about donating to the town, 'cause they can't use it.
Yeah, but they want views, they want all their apartments to have views.
Right.
And the other part that, the acreage that comes down has no view except of forest.
But they have a liability, they have it, so that's why they just rather give it to the town.
Yeah.
And, you know, someone told me, yeah, it's flatter enough in some areas, you could do a park there, but it's, well, I doubt anybody's gonna wanna park in their backyard.
Let's fix this one.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not gonna.
He's not going there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk about that in a minute, while we're talking about this, but anyway, so let's go back to, uh, this. I, I, um, move that we, um, approve the developer agreement subject to acceptance of the water board's, um, agreement as well. And if we can't come up with a, uh, resolution on the water board, uh, their paperwork then, this one would be null and void.
I second the motion.
Mayor? Yes. Unless you have a second, um, could you also make it subject to legal, because depending on what the, what the district does and their language, we may wanna change some of this just so that they harmonize. Okay, and so, I'll say that I, subject to legal review. There you go. As well.
I second it again.
Okay. Vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Working with attorneys up, or they, they crack me up, you know?
They sure do.
Sixth month I've been working on this agreement.
Attorneys.
These, they make the.
We're glad you're here, Sean.
They are, they make.
If you looked at, if you looked at attorney buildings, that's just an hour of our time.
Not, not, not in there.
Anyway, I'll tell you what, it's, one of the joys of being mayor is working with Sean, he's amazing. He and I were on the phone the other night, it was happy eleven o'clock at night, uh, going over some stuff and, so, I mean, it doesn't matter what time of day, he's there for so many of them, so, I appreciate him a lot. Anyway, um, so, let's move on to item number five, uh, CHS Wosnby Events Committee, uh, Budget Review. So, what you got for us? We're doing this, by the way, just ahead of our budget meeting coming up, we wanna kinda get a feel for where everybody's at and where they've been.
So, when I first, um, came up with how much our donations were for the year, um, they came up with, um, I came up with eleven hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents, of which five hundred was thank you Ed Baconburg and Maria and Robert Campbell gave two hundred dollars towards the events. And then I talked to Ben and, uh, unfortunately, the five hundred and the two hundred, even though we accepted the donations in July, which would have been fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, they were deposited and recorded in two thousand and eighteen in June. So, can't use the money, can't count towards my budget, so I was pretty upset about that. So, taking that money out, um, we had five hundred and ten dollars and ninety-two cents worth of donations that came in from the sales and proceeds of food that we sold at events, plus people donating an can that we left on the counter. And our total expenditures were seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and four cents, which meant we cost the town two hundred and fifty dollars and twelve cents, that's not my goal, but, um, we have an amazing events committee that, um, anonymously we get donations to cover the ice cream, Easter eggs and whatever supplies that we need for the events. But next year, I hope to be deficit neutral.
But don't we have an excess of from eighteen because the seven hundred was supposed?
No, because our budget was scrambling at the end looking for money and that's what they said.
We think they got galled up on last year's, uh, budget crunch. Um, prior year, I, I remember the, uh, events committee budget around four thousand dollars and that was paid for things like ice cream socials and Easter egg hunts and different, uh, things, signs and somehow these signs, these banners, they end up on the highway and I, I haven't seen a bill come in yet for them. I don't know who's paying for them, but thank you. And, uh, I also noticed that, uh, this year, we only had a budget of two thousand dollars, of which she just said we only spent two hundred and fifty dollars, so we're way under budget on that as well. And, um, the, uh, anyway, uh, a good job on fiscal responsibility and, uh, appreciate it. So, thank you. Any questions from anybody?
Easter egg hunt Saturday? Oh, yes, Easter egg hunt Saturday, Easter bunny's coming, so bring your kids, we've got pictures. And, uh, last week, we're selling hot dogs for fundraiser and all the proceeds and donations are going to Louis Ford to help him with his leukemia battle.
All right, number six, David's old junior, fire department budget.
Um, okay, so the fire department budget, I revised this budget probably, I don't know how long ago it was when I met with Danny and the mayor and, uh, it never got revised, so I'm sure that was from the changeover and accountants and stuff like that, so, so this budget doesn't really reflect, uh, what we're doing today, so.
Can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yeah.
Uh, so for the recording, I just wanna say that, uh, Mike McLaughlin has now joined the meeting. Go ahead.
Um, so, the only real change is, uh, I mean, a lot of this is not being spent, so I think our current year actual is like twenty-two thousand right now and we got, what, two months left?
Three.
Wait, three, three months, three months left. So I know we're going to possibly try and get some, uh, new tanks refurbished for our SCBA's because they're, uh, they're out of date as of this year and they have to be replaced by this year or else, uh, next year we get, well, I mean, we probably won't get in trouble because nobody really checks them but me. So, um, but everything else, there's about, I don't know, roughly seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars that's coming out of this budget because it was, uh, projected to, uh, have a type three engine in, that we were gonna try and, you know, produce and rev man everything for that and that never happened, so this budget's kinda just, uh, it is what it is, so. I don't think there's any, I mean, we haven't had any major expenses at all. Um, there's definitely some major expenses we could get, but.
How are the tires on the, the trucks, have you checked the dates on them or do we have to be replacing them?
Fifteen years old, that's on my budget that I had already submitted to handle.
Fifteen years old?
Yes.
Boy, that's.
Oh, wow. This is the engine that, you know, made.
Yeah, so that was on my old budget also, so, all of these things pretty much have just been pushed off, so we'll try. But you have some money left over for like maintenance, don't you, right now?
Um, on maintenance, let's see what we have on here. Maintenance, no. We got six fifty and we've spent three hundred and forty-nine, so we only have three hundred and one in maintenance right now. So that's, you know, that's not much. Those tires are gonna be roughly four thousand dollars, I think it was. I can't remember what I put on that for what I asked, what I got asked, what I recall. Four to five thousand average for all those tires, so it's pretty much half the price of what we paid for that engine, so.
Wow.
I think it was nine, right, we paid for that engine, Danny?
Eight, Danny, Danny gave us a bunch of goodies for the.
Okay, yeah, so it's roughly fifty percent of that engine. And then the engine's over twenty years old, it's not meeting NFA standards.
There's six tires on that?
Yeah.
I didn't take much money on those tires, I know a tire guy.
We just gotta pick up what we're, what we wanna do, so, that's kinda the, it's not even meeting standards right now, it's too old engine itself, so, um, that's about it, I don't really have anything, we've been running tight, trying not to, trying not to be a burden, so. Any questions?
I was just thinking that HUD has some, uh, money for starving communities like ours, might look, look into that and see if we can.
HUD zone, do we qualify as a HUD zone?
Did you ever find that? I don't know, but, uh, we, it's based on the number of blocks and I, I haven't done the math on that yet, but, um, anyway, let's just see what we can find out. Like even the, um, how's your friends out there, Hilday were saying, uh, even, uh, firehouse subs was, handouts and money, you that?
Yeah, they do that every year, I think it is, every handout of money, so.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I forgot to mention, sorry, um, we have the Forest Service grant, they're going after two for this new budget, which with this new budget, I have a lot of wildland, mandatory wildland equipment, PPE and stuff, so hopefully I can get ten thousand dollars for, towards that PPE. We haven't got it in two years, so hopefully this year we get that ground, so.
I, I, I assume that the truck, uh, new, new truck is ready to be fitted up for the fire season?
Yeah, it's, it's ready for county and southern Utah pretty much, so, but it's completely ready, it's up to our MLE standards, has every piece of equipment it needs to go out, we just.
You gave us a, a list of, uh, roster, what is the designation on this that says that who can be on that truck?
Pretty much everybody out there that has the designation has been trained from me to handle these engines.
Okay.
So.
Is that the WFFT?
That's Wildland Firefighter Type One.
Okay.
And then the other one's firefighter type two N one and then firefighter type one and two is structure.
So everybody can be out there?
Yeah, yeah, for the most part, yeah, just not an engine one I you want.
All right. Any questions from anybody? All right, let's move on to number seven, park restrooms. Um, we kinda started this subject about parks a minute ago and we had some great suggestions in the, uh, comments section on that, uh, Facebook account, um, what we had.
Mayor?
Yeah.
You sent me a little, uh, floor plan, you called me a few days ago and asked me about these bathrooms?
Yeah.
So let's see what I count, I think we're serving towns like wealth, it's all, just wanted to show you that and I, he sent it to Michelle, she can put it up there so I'm really see it.
Okay, all right. I'm not sure, I was thinking, quite that nice, but, uh, I, I might wanna downsize it a little bit just to, uh, unisolve kind of two of them and think that might sit underneath just based on, uh, our budget. I think this might be overkill, but I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, but on the, on the bathrooms, I, I kinda got the idea that we need to do something, uh, about restrooms out there and I picked up the phone and started making a few phone calls and I got, uh, commitment from, uh, Travis Holm for five thousand dollars for his restrooms for the park. And, uh, I, um, was encouraged by that, made another couple of phone calls and got an additional five thousand dollar commitment from someone else in anonymous order. And, uh, now with ten thousand dollars, we can start thinking about, we can pull this off, we get some volunteer labor, we got money to buy some materials, we've got enough people in this community that want this and they'll volunteer time, I think we're gonna make this happen. And, uh, uh, July one, uh, the mayor has another, uh, six months of salary till he's, uh, through the end of the year, that's forty-eight hundred dollars, and I'm willing to put all of that up as well. And that takes our total up to almost fifteen thousand dollars. Now, with that kinda money, is it possible to do, uh, a basketball court or, we, basically what I envision is from this front door, we put a sidewalk that goes all the way down the side of the building over to the midriff end, so now we have a handicap access all the way through there. And then someplace out there, we'll have to figure out, and then I'm way open to suggestions of how we lay this out, but, um, I think the restrooms would be someplace along this sidewalk. Um, keep in mind, our septic is about where our bathroom is here, straight out, that's where our current septic is. Now, that doesn't mean we have to use that one, we can always just put in a second one, especially if you have this many toilets. Um, but, uh, we would be able to, um, put some ADA compliant restrooms in and with those, um. Um, but, uh, we would be able to, um, put some ADA compliant restrooms in and with those, um, and possibly, let's see what our budget is, can we light the gazebo so when it's getting later at night, we can put the light on? And can we, uh, maybe put in some basketball, a basketball half court, a leaded sit-down pool court? And, uh, if we did that, then where would we put it? Where's the best location? I'd like to also see that we have, uh, I think there's a step out there, if I'm not mistaken, between the gazebo and that parking area. Am I wrong on that?
No, there's like two steps down.
And it just seemed like that could be a ramp as opposed to steps, so that way it's an ADA compliant access and then paid at least a couple of stalls were there, so if someone did come in, they'd be able to roll on something besides gravel and up a ramp to join whatever's going on. And I think that would be important to make it ADA compatible. Put some handicaps signed up. Now we have three stalls that access the building or slash park. Does that sound reasonable to people? And, um, with fifteen thousand dollars, I might be, uh, wrong, but I think we can pull it off with, uh, just buying materials and volunteer labor.
You can buy those.
If we're looking at chemical toilets, I mean, I know we have to rent them, but how much that would cost, how long would it take to get to fifteen thousand or ten thousand? Soon, if I just put some two or three chemical toilets?
Well, it, um, I think the permanent toilets are the way to go, but we also have a volunteer that's willing to pay for the chemical toilets until we get these permanent ones built. I was talking to, um, engineer today, Carl, uh, Rasmussen, I was, maybe it was yesterday. Um, and he just did, designed four bathrooms for another municipality and says, why don't I just, um, let you have a copy of these and then we don't have to redesign anything? And then that way it's all engineered already and we don't have to pay for it other than a little bit of money for the copy and whatever, so. Four, five hundred bucks and to, you know, for plot plan and a few things like that and he'll throw those bathrooms on there that are already engineered. And then that saves us a few dollars right there as well on, on the engineering and then, so, anyway, that's what I need to do is get upstairs and work through our plans that are laying around, see if I can plan a plot plan of this, he'll import that in and then we do a plot plan and anybody that's got any ideas of where you want this laid out, what would be a good idea, I'm all ears, I'd love to hear it. Go ahead. Peter.
Volunteer.
Yes, Peter, um. Huh?
Smith.
Smith, I worked on that last name. Peter Smith, uh, I talked to him, uh, on some other issues and says, aren't you a plumber? And would you mind helping us out? And he, he says, absolutely, I'll just, I'll volunteer all my time. And so he's a plumber and he would be licensed that, uh, he would be able to come in and help us do the plumbing aspect of it. I'm sure we got, between Richard Fisher or our stepson, uh, Irwin, if it's a sick build kind of thing, we've got framers out the yin-yang that we can get to frame this for free.
Yeah, we can figure it out for sure.
So I think we're gonna get this down, or we're just buying materials and, um.
Mike's an HVAC guy.
Like even if you have a tonic wind, if you have the two, two stalls, they just have electric heating, it's just free and it warms them so it's not freezing.
Do we need to accept donations?
Yeah, let's, uh, get them in the bank first, I'll get those checks and then we can do that. That be okay? But, um, anyway, I'll, anyway, I just, I was excited this week because of, uh, people chiming in on Facebook for this park idea and all these great ideas of how we can fix up our current park and I know these phone calls, sounds to me, I'm just excited, I'm telling them we got this done, so.
We have, we're gonna put the rations over here in the dirt just, uh, south of the pavilion.
I have no idea. There's a few ideas and, you know, anybody that's got an idea, draw it on a piece of paper and say, here, here's what I would do. Cause I would like to have more than one idea. I don't wanna just do my idea, I'd like to hear from you guys, yes.
I would suggest that maybe you put together a park improvement committee.
If we could have any volunteers to do that, that would be awesome.
Sounds like she's a volunteer.
It sounds like she's a volunteer to me, too. Thank you, just for volunteering. Anybody else wants to be on our park volunteer committee, feel free to step forward, give me a call or whatever. But I, I, I think that I'd like to have more than one set hands on this. I don't wanna dictate this is where it's all gonna go. So I, I learned from my Facebook message this week that there's a lot of good ideas out there and I need to listen. That's what I'm willing to do.
We'll try to pipe the propane out too for a little heater, a little hot water for hands unless we're just gonna do cold one.
Just do a little, it's a lighter heater.
Yeah, let's see if it gets down to a certain temperature, it kicks on.
I have some on the barn, in the bathroom, right? You can set it at like forty, forty-five degrees.
They only turn on when you turn on the water.
So that way you don't have to heat it, you just keep it from freezing when you're down.
Sorry, I'm gonna worry about people living in there now.
Any questions on this, in the comments? And, um, number eight, approval of minutes for March sixth, two thousand nineteen?
I read them, no issues.
You want to make a motion?
I'm formally approving minutes for March sixth, twenty nineteen.
Oh?
Aye.
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 Don't you care? Um, events committee, I think she already said everything, we do have Easter, uh, egg hunt this weekend and, uh, there's boxes and boxes of eggs that are stuffed with candy.
Are we sure?
Well.
Yeah, are we sure there's still candy in them?
They're accusing me of maybe opening up an egg or something. I saw the dog with one and what can I say?
It's gonna go, what, to about two o'clock, please, like, what are we, just?
Twelve o'clock.
Start at twelve.
Yeah, I know, by the time we can visualize that.
Whatever it's finished, it'll start at noon and we're gonna serve hot dogs and, uh.
Then we'll just do hot dogs.
The chips and drinks.
Some drinks afterwards.
And.
We'll bring you cupcakes. Easter bunny, kids can take a picture with Easter bunny.
Are we gonna charge for the progress?
No.
Okay, that's a way to raise money, you know, you charge dollars.
Yeah, I feel kind of stingy we do that.
On the eggs?
On the picture with the bunny.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's just a fun.
Alright, no problem.
But that's the thing. Are you still having Easter bunnies though? Huh? Are we still gonna have the chili cook-off?
Yeah, we're gonna ask him right now if he wants to report on that.
Yeah. So, um, chili cook-off's still on the twenty-seventh. Um, I've already got a bunch of donations, so we're gonna have our normal, uh, raffle and all that stuff, so. Bring you chili, it's gonna be set up from the flyers that are pretty much of all the, all of the areas that we put them last year, so. We're gonna do it just like last year, so.
When can we drop off donations?
Drop off donations, you can, you can come and drop them off.
That day?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want to. So it says on the flyer to start around ten and, uh, people can start bringing their chili anytime in between there. So ten and twelve, I think we're gonna actually judge the chili right after twelve, so.
Now, these ones go to the fire department?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And we make sure he keeps them too. I don't wanna take anything from him like, uh, someone else that used to. Um, have down here planning commissions, anybody, have any you wanna talk about, planning commission? Uh, big plans, water, Harold, do you have any you wanna share with us?
Uh, I spent some time with Ben, uh, with our budget and he, uh, was very helpful in getting that together, so. Our next water meeting, we'll have a work meeting with that budget and approve it the first meeting in June, so.
Okay.
We're on, um, schedule with that. Also, uh, spent a good share of the day going over the water agreement and we can discuss it at the water meeting or after the, after the town meeting, but uh, I think a lot of it is, as you indicated, that only the lawyers understand, but, uh, there are a few things I know that we need to clarify that would be easy to clarify, that ownership, which side of the valve, what kind of valves are there at, that sort of thing. Those are definitely things we can discuss and nail it out and so that's it.
Okay, alright, thanks. Uh, code enforcement, Richard Soski?
Oh, just working on two small things, nothing of, uh, any serious nature.
Okay.
Yeah, I had something on code enforcement, do you want me to do it now or wait till the general appears?
Uh, yeah, I'll just wait for the, um, uh, public comments.
Okay, thank you.
And, how's that? Oh, there it is. It's almost off my page, I couldn't see it. On, uh, road and storm drains, we did have our first, um, road committee meeting, I'll let Danny Bass record on that.
Well, we, there's a map setting up here on the table, we've reviewed a lot of the roads that we have to start working on and the first one's gonna be out towards the bubbling well. Trying to get enough cinders to go down around past Frank's place and then we're trying to prioritize the roads, the worst roads in the neighborhood. We're gonna either grade them or smooth them down first and we'll start putting cinders and that'll help pack them down, so. So that's, that's if we get a truck.
And we talked about the, uh, truck already as part of that, but, uh, one of the things we talked about that, uh, we're looking seriously at is, is a drag. When you, when you go out there, um, on a motor grader, you're going five miles an hour and, uh, you're basically, um, showing some of the materials around and, um, we're seriously considering some type of drag that would help level out some of these, uh, washboards in between the motor grader. So that way it'd be quick and easy or we could just soak on, make the pass and move the washboards improved. And you can do that on a motor grader basis because you're able to go fifteen miles an hour and it's not as big a deal to, you know, pretty much anybody with a pickup truck can come and pull a drag and, uh, get the road real quick on some of those roads, so. Alright, so it's another.
Yeah, the two different drags we're looking at and young man, Dr. Bass, got one he made it for himself, we're also looking at a couple, we're gonna be cutting some long pipes and see if that'll work a little bit better for us, but, uh, we're gonna try a couple of different methods. Like you said, to level them out, so we're just not filling up the ripples out with rock and then we end up just blowing it out when somebody's driving out through there, so.
Anyway, so the roads committee, we had, uh, six people in the meeting that were interested in giving input and feedback and, uh, it was, well, I mean, it was hard to get a word in edgewise because everybody had ideas and it was a great brainstorming session where, uh, people were giving feedback, how are we gonna fix these roads and make them all better, so. I appreciated all of them showing up to help give us some feedback.
For those who don't know, who's on the roads committee?
Um, so we had Danny Bass, I asked him to be in charge of it, I was president of the meeting and, uh, Richard Fisher and, um, Lee Fralich and Jerry Jorgensen and Matt Jessup. Those are the guys that were there and helpful. Two of those guys, Richard especially and, uh, Matt, they do the stuff every day, so they're invaluable on their feedback, so. Um, should we open the public comments?
Hello, Mr. Kito?
Margie's at the mosquito abatement meeting as we speak. That is very tiny.
Well, uh, I'm here to, we, uh, open public comments. Sorry. Close?
Aye.
Aye.
So, excellent. Like, Fingberg, fourteen twenty-four, one way. I talked to Ben if we had any rule or regulation about trash cans being left on the street all week or more than trash day because it'd become an obstacle for driving. And he said as far as he could tell, it was nothing. So I would think it would not hurt to have some sort of, uh, rule or regulation that they only should stay twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, something of that sort. And so you can't just leave it on the street for the whole timeframe, essentially because it's a driving obstacle, so.
When we first moved here, we were told you can only put it out as dust the night before.
Right.
But there was never like a written rule, just like rumor in the town.
Well, I, I know, like, last season did that, say like six o'clock at night, the day before and then six o'clock at night the next day. I know sometimes people vacation, you know, those things, but, and I think you gotta ask the neighbor to bring it in and not just leave it on the street for all week. So, take that as consideration, please.
Well, on the trash cans, there is a problem because they get knocked over. In, uh, in front of this young lady's house, they got knocked over and they were full of nails. Dumped right in front of her driveway. So we had to pick up a lot of nails from construction at the time, so it, it can be a hazard. And then the wind comes along and somebody puts all the weeds in there and, uh, then the weeds are back out in the road, so. A limited amount of time would definitely help us, you know? I would particularly like to have the trash cans, you know, put away so they're not still out there in the open also, but, uh, that would be asking for a little much.
Alright, thanks for commenting. Anybody else have any comments?
Um, I forgot a few things. Um, everybody be careful on the roads, I've been seeing water wrecks lately, a lot of people on the highways. Um, also been getting a decent amount of calls on people leaving campfires out. I think we had one just out in Bubbling Wells just this last weekend that we had hiked out too, so. Um, pay attention to everything on the road. This weekend we had a weird event that Richard Fisher helped with and also Jerry Darby, they both helped. So thanks for that. But, uh, just watch out, we got a lot of weird stuff going on it seems like and, uh, just be careful, so.
Did anybody get cited for that? Since he, allegedly he knew his truck had a problem.
Yeah, they had a sheriff right there, but they didn't do it.
Yeah, they're talking about the sheriff. A medic gets cited.
They didn't stop and actually do anything about it. For that kind of problem like that, I mean, they're gonna have to get lucky and be here when it actually happens to actually go after the guy and find someone with a responsibility on that, so I don't know what they do there, honestly.
Okay, thank you.
But we've been having a lot of calls lately, so, um, be careful.
Not, not any of your women this morning, you okay?
I don't know, I don't usually hear her back, so she had the head injuries and she flew about, I don't know, in between a hundred and a hundred and fifty feet maybe.
Oh boy.
So, so there's, there's a lot of, watch that turn, that turn I've been to, probably more than any turn in this area, that first turn.
Dead Man's Corner.
Rattlesnake, they call it Rattlesnake Corner, they call it Dead Man's Curve, they call it her corner, I don't know, it's got
Bull's Lock, yeah, the old, after green.
Right there before you turn, you go where the old golf course was, right there, so.
Main ground, the law was made it to the wash.
Yep, so, just be careful.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Who's projecting lights up on Smithsonian View? I sent you an email saying that somebody's camping up there. We walked up there.
I missed that.
And there's, and they're still there. We walked up there and there's no way anybody can camp up there, so somebody's projecting three lights up on Smithsonian View. You'll be able to look at it out your window about halfway across and halfway up.
Do you think there's someone out there swaying that's way out there?
No, we were, we were, we hiked up there, it's up on the top of the cliffs.
Oh, I'm not hiking up there.
No, we did. We thought somebody was hiking up there, so we went and checked it out.
Lights up on the, on the mountain or do it from down?
On the mountain.
Okay.
And, uh, so we were hiking up there and to see if somebody's camp, there's no way anybody can camp up there, so somebody's projecting three lights up there.
Huh, interesting, I'll look for it tonight.
Uh, that's, yeah, look at it, it's really straight. Sometimes they move and sometimes they don't.
Anybody else?
Oh, no.
They UFO's.
No, we don't need any more UFOs. I make a motion, will you?
Yeah.
I make a motion to close public comments?
Close?
Aye.
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 Our favorite?
Make a motion, we determine the town council.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Don't leave, don't leave, don't let that be.
So, um, I told the meeting to order, it's the, uh, town council water meeting.
Is there another tenant up there?
Should be. And, um, I guess we'll call for the writers.
Mike McLaughlin, aye.
Dipper Tadde?
Marty Wilson, be here.
Paul Edwards in here.
Danny Rasmussen.
And, uh, Ida May, uh, financial state of the district this week. Ben, do you have any feedback on that, that, uh, Neil Duncan or Ross come in for any orientation on that?
No.
Um, I guess I feel frustrated as mayor because of, uh, I've asked for three months for Neil Duncan, I've personally asked him, I've asked, um, I owe merit, please get these guys down here so they can understand where we're at with the finances because these guys are part of the decision-making board and in, uh, all these months, uh, in fact, I had because these guys are part of the decision-making board and in all these months, in fact, I had this on agenda, he'll look back one month ago and one month later they still haven't, you know, find time to come in. Now, keep in mind that Neil Duncan's here making deposits a couple times a week, just still doesn't have time to even take five minutes to take a look at the finances of the district. It's frustrating for me that these guys are on the board and they don't care enough or they, I'm not sure, not caring or just don't have the time, but both of them are bad scenarios and it frustrates me personally that they're not here.
Neil's wife's pretty sick, they released him out of the Bishop Rick to help out with his wife, so that might be a little bit of what's going on there, just head up.
Could be, yeah, could be. And so, anyway, I've been working on this for three months though, heavily in the last over thirty days. So, anyway, that's where we're at with that part, it's just, I've included in, that's, I don't know if you guys have any questions for Ben on this. The finances, this is the document we're trying to go over with them. I've had this for a while and we held it back for a month waiting for these guys to come in, so I had a little bummed on. Do you have any you want to bring up, I don't wanna.
Maybe I'll just, yeah, so this document, some things I prepared just to go over with water board members. And it also, simplifying the financial statements in this manner kind of helped me to understand, basically, the water district is reliant on impact fees, new development coming in. So I just wanted to understand exactly how dependent that is. So the top half shows our revenues, shows the district's revenues, the operating expenses minus depreciation because if you just go off in the income statement, it includes depreciation which is really a non-cash item. And then the third section is the debt service. So the column on the left shows the monthly reliance on impact fees, which is, I mean, as you can see, it's a little more than one impact fee per month. And the column on the right is the annual reliance on the impact fees. So that's the top section there. The bottom section, again, this is for, this was for me to familiarize myself with the water district's financials. This, I, we, I took it over in early January. Now, one thing, this is essentially just a, just a simple cash projection, it's something I put together in a few minutes. But I omitted one major component of their cash position, which is.
Michelle, can you scroll up? Oh, sorry. Not that many, by the way.
So, that cash projection excludes investment accounts. So the water district sets aside money to make debt payments. And so they, the water district does have some, you know, it's pretty scary when you see these red numbers kind of towards the bottom in the next month because the water district does have the Canaan payment, the first Canaan payment is due on May first. And this is just, that cash projection was just money in the main checking account, it didn't include the PTIF accounts. And so that's something that, just something to keep in mind with that. And then there's, I just made kind of a few general notes on the bottom. I don't know, Mayor, were you going to talk about RCAC and operating expenses?
Why don't you go ahead?
Yeah.
If you want, I have some stuff I was gonna go over, it's probably the same thing you are.
In the last three months, I've met with, well, I spoke with Michael Grainger with the Division of Drinking Water. The mayor met with RCAC and I met with the state auditor. And in each of these cases, I kind of talked to them just generally about water departments, water districts and how they should be financially structured. In every case, all three cases, everybody, each one of those three different individuals stated that the base rate, which is in apple balance, twenty-nine dollars per month, should pay for operating expenses and for debt service, for our debt obligations. And then the overage, so if you use forty-dollar a gallon of water, and the impact fees should go towards capital improvements. Now, the water district is in a little bit of a special case.
Turn it off. Turn it off so it doesn't go on again.
Okay, so, the water district is a little bit of a different entity in that it's kind of a special case because given the, all of the facility improvements that were made all at once and the acquisition of the water companies in two thousand and twelve, essentially it's saddled with maybe more debt than a traditional water district would be. And my really rough, very rough estimates indicate that we, that the water district won't get to the point of making, of covering our operations and debt service until we have about a hundred to a hundred and fifty more homes. And once we get, once the town gets to that point, then all impact fees and overage charges could go towards, could be allocated towards capital improvements. So that's, I mean, that was, it was good to get that from three different perspectives, how the, how water departments should ideally be structured. There's a few other notes on negative fund balance, this was brought up in our, in the audit, that C-LAR requires five percent of revenue to be set aside to make up a fund balance efficiency, which the water district has. Now, this includes depreciation, so this is also non-cash. The water district can continue to operate, still have the cash in the bank, but from a financial perspective, it's not in compliance right now. And so we're working with, that's something that will come up in our budgeting meeting in early May, how we can strive to get to that point of making up for that negative fund balance. And that was, that about covers the summary. I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have about that.
Guess any questions, John?
Back here, Marty.
Just one comment. Danny and I came in and met with Ben and went over this. We made a personal effort to come in and spend time in the office and I have a copy at home and I'm down through it, so we weren't totally blowing you off as far as not coming in and going over this with Ben. I talked to the other two individuals and asked them to, Michael Grainger and Mr. Clay, do that as well, so. There has been an effort, plus I've met with Ben on other occasions relating to this.
I know, you're a client. I've seen you in here and I know you're a client, as, you know, I was just frustrated, Ross especially, because I've talked to him personally three times and said, yeah, it was much as three months ago, twice this month, and just, yeah, okay, I'll take care of it and, you know, so I was just frustrated. And anyway, I promised you I wouldn't bring that on the last meeting because you were gonna have to make sure it got in here and it didn't happen, so. I just wanted everybody to know where we're at. So, RCAC work training, meeting notes, pretty much, I was gonna share what Ben already has as far as what I learned. At the meeting I was up, at a training meeting with one of Danny Bass and Richfield. And they held a really nice meeting, we learned a lot there. But the main thing I came away from was the same thing that Ben's sharing with, where our base rate should be covered in our expenses and nowhere near, we're doing that. Do you have any you want to share from that meeting, Danny, no?
No, I think I talked about it last time as far as one of the things that they brought up, what we should be doing and we discussed that and some of the guys said they were gonna get to them and start doing something, there's a whole list of things they said. And I compared about seven different cities, our rate versus our fees and our rate is actually the second lowest in all the cities I've talked to as far as water rates, but we're extremely high in our fees, so. We're about the highest in the state except for Park City. Yes?
I asked Ben to put the latest impact fee study on the website and it authorized us to charge thirteen thousand, seven hundred in two thousand and twelve. So we're looking at eight years ago or seven years ago. The price of pipe is more than doubled in that period of time, so. And we need to do an impact fee study, there's no argument there. But just looking back at it, it would seem to me that we are defensible at this point and that we haven't raised it. We're two thousand dollars below what it could have been back in twelve, so. We are high, there's, again, that's the way it is, but we have thirty square miles, so we cover, and we have three hundred and fifty houses. That's a lot of pipe to cover those houses, that's where the expense is at.
Well, we've acquired a lot of debt, so it's understandable.
And one more comment on that, now, the Canaan Springs became available at a very opportune time for us. And we had the opportunity of letting it go, we're buying it, dammed if you do, damaged if you don't feel it. So we picked it up, took on the debt.
Well, it was probably a smart thing to do. It just, it's, we gotta work through it, is all. So, there's just a little bit of a mountain there, but I'm sure we can do it. Right now the town's paying for the bookkeeping, Ben services, the office, the phones, we don't charge them anything right now, we're just, everything is, it's saving them thousands of dollars every single month and that's helping put this budget back in line. So, we're doing what we can to help them.
One thing that might help, though, I don't know if it's legal, is that for credit card, have a fee, you know, extra one percent, two percent, three percent. Because we're paying them one or two or three percent, so.
Are we charging a fee right now, convenience?
Of course not, so.
If I'm not mistaken, we have that fee built into the price, you can't charge extra.
Yeah, I think there might be some regulation.
I notice in retail, with my business, I cannot add per credit card fee, it has to be built into my pricing. And then give a cash discount.
The requirement, that used to be under federal law, now the prohibition has changed and so there are other municipalities that are charging. You have to look at your individual contract with each credit card company to see what that contract has in there because their language may be the old language that says you can't charge extra if you're gonna take our card. So just take a look at those, but you, but it's changed now, you can. In fact, if you, if you pay a Dominion bill online, they'll charge you a fee, with that fee, yeah.
So the government doesn't totally pay taxes, the credit card company charges you one or two percent usually.
Yeah, and what it does say is that it isn't the government charging you that, it's the company, that third-party company you vendor, you go to, pay your huge amount of taxes that everybody had to pay this year. Not that I'm making a statement. So, item, item C is the Gooseberry Mesa Water District Agreement. So our agreement is subject to, this one we approved. The red lines that you have here are the things that Sean's gone over for notes. We're actually gonna be deciding any today because we don't have a final version, but I just thought I'd throw that in a packet, see if anybody had any particular questions while we have the water district, again, Sean here, if you have any questions you could ask him.
One, one, that is, since Dale is here, we have some light foot. There are two options with the metering of the water. One large meter at the bottom of the hill as it goes onto their property. The other option is to put meters on each of the buildings where there are three units per building. It would be, the school of thought with the meter at the bottom of the hill is that we relieve ourselves of a vast responsibility for the rest of the pipe because we are not responsible for the maintenance of it after it leaves that meter. And Dale might straighten me out on some of this, but I'll hit the high spots and then. But if we, if we do that, then they may not maintain that pipe. And if it goes south because something has happened to it and we haven't been going up and inspecting it, then it could be an issue if we put meters on each of the buildings and we have the right to go up and inspect that pipe, exercise the fire hydrants, do whatever we need to, look at the pumping system, whoever's involved, and maintain it so it's operating. But if we don't have the meters up on those buildings, then we're stopped at the bottom, other than, we have the Dale Jim, I think that.
My opinion is, is that, for me, that is no different than any mainline extension that we do in town. And anything that we, that we do do is a mainline extension. Of course, becomes district property and district responsibility. And like, we had a conversation about this today, my biggest issue is the safety and the quality of the water and making sure that hydrants are being flushed, that backflow preventers are actually working. Technically, by water quality standards, we're responsible for the furthest running tap in any building that's hooked to our system. And so, for me, for the ensuring that that system's gonna be taken care of, I think is huge for the district. To take care, for us to be responsible for flushing the hydrants, for making sure that the sitters, that nothing is stuck inside of those and, it makes me nervous to be locked out of a big chunk of our system essentially, it does. It just, as an operator and as your superintendent, it makes me extremely nervous to be locked out of such a huge operation that's hooked to our system.
Is there a charge per meter, so we have only one meter, we're only gonna be one charge, we have a hundred meters, we have no charge at all, is that okay?
Well, this is, this is still open and we can make the decision which way we wanna go on it. And it's a few or.
I can appreciate, I just, the reason why I was late was because I was in a meeting with a large PD over the water issues and I will say, and Friday I have another one with a developer on pumps. So there's a couple of things here, I agree, I agree with you, that if there's contamination, you've got a hundred and twenty units there, as long as they're not going to be individually on lots, as they said in this agreement, because that's not what was approved by the town. I think you're free to do it however, way you want to. I will say this, the current language of the agreement says, in one part, that they are turning over the entire system to the district and then in another part says they're going to maintain it. And so my question was, okay, which way is it, because we gotta know exactly what we're in there, because if there's contamination beyond that bulk meter, then there is potential contamination to a hundred and twenty units, we all are responsible for that. But if we're, if we are gonna be responsible, then we should be a hundred percent in on it because.
Amen.
We're gonna.
I see potential for cross-connection, I, I, I'm nervous about turning that much of a system over to a private entity that's hooked to our public system.
Well, you're the one that's able to call it, you know, if you want it.
I would, I would much rather.
We can.
The district takes that, takes that over and controls that and maintains that, most definitely.
And I think we ought to treat each of those little three-unit things as almost like an individual house. Got the main line, got the fire hydrants, stop a meter right at the edge of their little road. Sixty, eighty feet to their, on their own, like a house, then they can run that little tiny, you know, one-inch line to their own self, but. To that meter, right off the road and to the hydrant side, it's all be owned by the district, maintained by the district.
What about other property up there, is there another parcel up there, forest, private?
There's one between Gooseberry Hotel and Smithsonian, but I think it's just one.
The church one, I'm saying there's that what you're talking about.
Well, no, I'm talking about the one, the most, I know the number, but I can't explain where it is.
Well, anyway, my point bringing that up is if there was a future possible development of that property, then if it works, we can tie into our system and go to another property and if it's theirs.
It's probably.
Very good point. So having that ability to even charge a connection fee because that's our system, seems like that would also be a coming play possibly.
It's probably seven or ten acres, has good access, there's no reason it wouldn't be developed at some point, so.
Yeah, I think in resolving that issue, I think Dale's opinion and the mayor's.
I'm listening to Dale right now, whatever he wants to say, it's by my name. I think he'll do a good idea to maintain the system.
Just like we would with any other.
Do they have sort of extra forty-one meters or whatever it is?
They have to, just like normal, just like.
Well, that's one point, do they do that or we're not?
No, they, yeah, we don't. No, they, yeah, we don't.
Whenever somebody goes into the, that developer pays for all that. They pay for the main line.
Yeah, we don't pay them.
They pay for all that.
We would hope so.
Well, my point is we don't charge them a separate, we just, we just, they put them in and we give it up. So, we don't pay them.
Correct.
Long tail proves that. He's paid off a lot and it's not my end. Not my tail, exactly.
I have, I have one question. On the twenty-five acre feet of water, they're, they say they're bringing into the project for a hundred and twenty units. Now, is that just for the hundred and twenty? If they decide with the hotel, we're gonna put in a pool, a spa and all this stuff, are they gonna have to bring more water to the project?
Certainly, in long metered, if it goes over their, the amount they put in the bank, then they'll have to put some more in the bank to get service.
Okay, but we already figured out the twenty-five acre feet will cover the hundred and twenty units.
Yeah, well, it's, yes, but then by the time that we go for a year or so and everybody takes a shower and on and on and on-
Yeah, right.
Then we'll have some hard numbers. But it pencils out at twenty-five acres, the way it is right now.
Above and beyond that, they understand that there's a stipulation that they build more like a pool and all this stuff, that they have to bring more, more water to the system?
Well, it, yeah. That, I don't know if it's written in the agreement, but it's written in the deed.
Well, I think the understanding, so correct me if I'm wrong, uh, would be that they're bringing twenty-five acre feet. I think it needs to be identified so we know that exactly what we're right to bring in. But they bring that to, to the district. The district is saying, that's all you need to give if they're, with, for this development. If, if at a hundred and twenty units, you use more, it's simply go through the meters and go pay more because the district has the water to be able to, to provide that. So, so they would just be paying for any additional usage. They're not gonna get a credit every month for their twenty-five acre feet or anything like that. They're paying the same rate that everyone else would pay in their category from day one.
Well, see, this leads into this. It's no different than what we're doing with a private lot. Uh, you know, for an acre lot, uh, folks get, uh, one acre foot of water. It's something that I've brought up actually quite often. There is, there is a lot of folks in town that are using over their acre foot of water that actually goes with that lot. These folks need to be treated just the same. If we get in there and they're, they're using over twenty-five acre feet and it's a substantial amount, I agree with what Sean's saying, is there's gotta be some language in there that says, hold on a minute, you guys are doing, our calculations show twenty-five acre feet, but you guys are now using forty-five acre feet. We're losing money. Uh, we're, we're, we're pumping water that we're not getting paid for. So, definitely that language has gotta be in there so that we're recouping those pumping costs. Because it comes down to the, the everyday cost that it costs for, especially electricity and the wear and tear on the system to get that water out.
But I think the pumping cost is a very good point. And that's why we typically don't allow anything other than gravity flows because there's an additional cost. So, it's not just from our wells. Just, oh, because I think pumping, yeah, from the very- And so if they're doing that, you, you know, you wanna make sure they're paying enough that you gotta place a pump sometime.
Exactly. If we're, if, you know, uh, let's just say in the acre footage, and we, we've, we budgeted in that we're gonna pump a hundred and seventeen acre feet for this scenario. And that's what our, our budget is for our electrical costs for our wells. But we're using two hundred and fifty acre feet, we're upside down. We're, we're pumping water that we're not getting, we're not getting our cost for, for pumping that water.
Well-
And that actually applies with anybody, anybody.
So, you can, you can address that, Mayor, and, um, Harold, by, by your fee schedule. So, if the time comes and Dale comes to you and says, here's where we are, right? And we have additional costs when people are in this area of usage here, then you can simply adjust your rate so that someone who either is using, if they're using too much, they'll naturally start conserving more or they'll be paying more money to offset your cost.
Well, sure. Well, the bits developed, they, they originally asked for the units. But in this last meeting, he talked about, not only the use, but he talked about having this aquaponics thing, talked about a pool, talked about having a barn grill. He talked about having a bunch of things that weren't part of the units. And he's gonna use a lot more water, the twenty-five acre feet aren't-
But remember, they would have to come back in.
Exactly.
They'd have to come back in for those uses. The town is very clear on that. And have to, then, you'd be talking to the district and saying, here's the additional-
They need to add some more water to the, to the bank.
Right, they could talk, they'll have to do that. Well, I like the idea of, uh, reviewing that, um, our billing policy because, you know, if I'm the offender where we're going over one acre feet, I should be paying to the nose on that water bill once it goes over that certain amount. I don't know how you do that on an annual basis. Do you just look at it in six months and say you're halfway through and you use more than you did for half the year?
I'm a huge objector of us. I'm not saying that we need to be doing conservative, uh, uh, being conservative and to do that. But, you know, when you go into this different tier of this usage, if I'm just sitting at home on the couch and doing my rough math, what's it costing? And what these folks have actually paid for their four thousand dollars for their acre foot of water, they're getting a rip and deal, they're getting a rip and deal on water when you're using eight, nine acre feet of, of water. We're not recouping that in our tier. Ben would go with me on that one. He's the money guy. That, if, we're not, we have folks out in Cedar Point that, that, they're using a hundred and fifty thousand gallons. You're three twenty-five, three hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty gallons as an acre foot of water. I mean, it's a couple of months, you're, you're out.
And they don't have a broke, a broken line or anything?
No. There's a couple of families out there. I just, I don't know what you guys are doing with the water.
Hundred and fifty thousand a month?
Oh, yeah.
We went out and went through the entire place twice for leaks, just for PR purposes. And, uh, he turns something on and the meter starts spinning like a top and he'd turn it off and he'd say, well, that was that part of our property. And there's no brakes because the meter stopped. We go to the next one and, and we went through everything. And by the time we were done, he probably turned a thousand gallons while we were testing it.
Maybe it comes through irrigation leak or something like that.
No, the meter will spin. I mean, you know, if they go and they shut their house completely off and they shut off their main valves and that meter doesn't spin, they don't have a leak. This is what they're actually, this is, they know they have water on them, let's put it that way.
Well, I think we should look at it and see if we can fix that problem. I don't know how we're mathematically gonna do it on a, I believe you do it on a monthly basis, but someplace there's gotta be a settlement every, every year or something.
I'm gonna start, Ben and I will start auditing this every month. This is gonna start really locking down, um, for us internally of, of seeing where those big users are. And when we talk about budgeting and getting the, the district to stand on its own legs, these are big holes, I see, that are in the budget that are very glaring to me that we need to be addressing and taking care of.
Yeah, I totally agree with you.
Yeah, what's the amount of gallons again for acre feet of water?
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand eight fifty is an acre foot of water.
Can we get that a year?
And that's a, that's a foot of water, of course, spread out over, uh, an acre parcel.
Is that annual?
That's what you buy annually. That's what you, that's what you buy when you buy your acre foot of water. That's what our math is, is for, that's, 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 that's your water you get. My other job that I had when we ran, when I ran a secondary system, you got cut off if you were off over your acre footage on the, on the, on the secondary system. You just got cut off so that you'd have to have this budget. I'm not saying to cut folks off. We just need to start to recoupe our cost for what we're pulling out of the ground.
So, just curiosity sake, so the big offenders, if they wanted to buy more acre of water, that would be an option?
That's would be, yeah, that would be one of the suggestions or we need to start building a different tier that, that gets these really big, uh, over, over the, over the top, uh, folks, I feel like that that's a big hole in our budget.
Oh, absolutely.
We're losing money on that.
What's the average home? What's the average home usage?
Up to those.
Well, uh, it depends because in the summer months, um, the average, and when I say summer months, about eight months out of the year, really the average, uh, usage is between, I was thirty thousand would be good if I was taking all of the systems. Cedar Point's a little bit different. There's some, there's some big users, but there's some folks back in the Smithsonian that they're easy. Eighty-five thousand gallons, uh, that they'll do in a month.
So, if you use thirty a month, then you, you'd just be on borderline in a year. You use it every month, the thirty, right?
Exactly. But that, so summer months, it's just big spikes where now we've got the pumps running all the time and, uh, I don't feel like that we're making our money back for our cost of our pumping. Back to the Gooseberry folks, they need to be treated that same way. I mean, keep your close eye on their twenty-five acres and if they're getting up out of the, uh, we, yeah, that's, I agree. That language has gotta be in there to protect us.
The other thing that I help is just to put a little more information in with the bill and let people know these kind of figures and numbers. I mean, just like taking a load of the debtors.
It's gonna take a bigger education, educational campaign if you want folks to wrap their heads around it.
Well, if you go to the website, it will show that if you go over X number of gallons, that you're paying two dollars and fifty cents for a thousand instead of the dollar and a half.
But they'll say that's not even-
There is a scale in there.
Right.
It's not covering the extra costs type of-
Yeah, we need to beef it up, so.
Because in the state, we'd really like to see more tiered structures. And I, I think Apple Valley in Washington County actually is a really good example of a tiered structure. We're, we have a more aggressive, currently have a more aggressive tier than, than all other municipalities.
Yeah, we're not giving it away.
No, we're not gonna be, we're definitely not giving it away. We just need to take care of these bigger slices that we have in the-
Uh, any more on that? I've got another one here we could go to. Just so, I think I get all of them.
Can we, uh, get together on the meeting on maybe, uh, Saturday? Probably about the only day here really available. Well, and, um, if you have some time right after the meeting, we could just down. Okay, yeah, well, I was just thinking it's, uh, they, they emailed me wanting to-
Chase started at seven thirty.
Do a phone kind of a meeting, though, uh, Rich.
Yeah, it's Saturday or whenever, if you like to get together, we could get all the principals together and do it.
That way you can meet the East somebody.
Yeah, that way I can meet the, I'll pay the house picture with the mayor. Yeah, let me, let me chat with my, I don't, I don't know if you saw your email or not, but they emailed just before the meeting saying they wanted to have a phone call with all of us.
No, I didn't see it.
Yeah, this came in just before the meeting. So, they, they wanted to get everybody on the phone at one time and see if we can hammer out these details. And that, and I was just saying, they said Thursday or Friday and I know he is hard to get on Thursday or Friday. And that's why I was suggesting, I wonder if it's available on Saturday, well, ten, because usually I get them on Saturday.
I might bring someone else along with me at that time, sure.
Well, it's, it's on my phone anyway, it would be like a conference call, so we wouldn't have to be on one place.
Just drop the shit off, it would be fine. Or is it your wife?
Yeah, wife and grand.
Oh, there we go.
Anyway, we can work that out and I'll, I'll let you know. But they, I see that on the email. That went to you and Harold or, uh-
And we'll just, what do you guys want to do?
So, anyway, um, let's go on to the next one, approval minutes.
I'm ready for minutes, no issues.
If that's okay, so.
I moved it to course without a minute for one sixteen, two thousand nine, and for two twenty, two thousand nine.
Seventeen, nineteen.
Thank you, answer.
Say it.
Vote.
Aye.